Okay, good evening and welcome to Milton Public Schools Hearing on School Choice. I'm going to bring it to order. There is a PowerPoint unless anyone in the committee would like to run through it. I'm going to say that we can strike that and if anyone wants to speak to it or have any questions, whether anyone's here for Citizen Speak or anyone from the committee. No? Okay, then I'm going to officially close the hearing and we will have a vote later on this evening in our agenda on it. Okay. Now, I'm officially going to call the meeting to order. As is our tradition, please rise and sweep the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there any changes or additions that anyone would like to make? Okay.
You can strike six A two.
Okay. And I'm going to add, under the chair's report, I'm going to put a D to discuss dates for retreat. And also on B, I'm just going to add, I don't know if you want to, B one, a vote on subcommittees and advisory committees. Okay. All right, anyone here for Citizen Speak tonight? Okay, all right, next up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman. We're going to ask the Collicott Site Council to join us at the table for their site council presentations. And turn the presentation over to Principal Concannon.
Good evening, thank you all for coming to Collicott. It is our pleasure to host you here tonight. We hope you enjoyed the tours by the students and I want to publicly thank the students and their families for making time during this evening to entertain you all and we hope you enjoyed the tour. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce you to some of our school site council. Not everybody is here, we have a large council. We meet quite often and we work together to plan major events for our school and also to create a school improvement plan that we hope to share with you tonight. Here tonight, I have our Assistant Principal and Curriculum Coordinator, Xena Hamada, Grade Three Teacher, Laura McDermott, Kindergarten Teacher Samantha Bullard, Future Problem Solving Teacher and Collicott Parent, Justine Novak. We have our Community Representative and Long Standing Volunteer for All Things, Margot Tansey, and a kindergarten parent as well, Amanda Dear. So, thank you all for coming as well. Ellen Lohan is also our Science Coordinator and she will return momentarily. She's just brought our student volunteers to exit the building. So, for tonight, we are going to share with you, our agenda is to work on, to share with you some of our accountability and MCAS data, not all but some, to talk about the goals that we've set for our school improvement plan and then to share with you what makes Collicott so special. So, we'll share some things beyond the data. At the Collicott, there is a commitment to academic excellence and high standards for administrators, teachers, and students. Our staff is dedicated and creative. They're committed to maximizing the individual potential of each child. Through a wide variety of challenging activities and experience, we strive to provide a strong academic foundation and a love for learning in a secure, safe, and stimulating environment that values individual differences. We hope you saw evidence of that on your tours tonight. At the Collicott, we have a code. This came from an initiative for our Positive Behavior Intervention System. We've created a code that we share with the students and it's very easy to communicate expectations for all things. For all things, we expect that students here are respectful, responsible, and hardworking. There you see one of our kindergarten students, Ms. Wolfson, and she is holding a sign that says, "All are welcome here." This was our first assembly in September where we shared the book, "All Are Welcome", and we then created this beautiful mural with the help of all teachers and our art teacher, Laurel Bernini, put that together with the help of many teachers. So, it's a staple of our school and you'll see many pictures of the children with the feathers and the message is clearly, "All are welcome here." So, at the Collicott, we now, this year, house an elementary school that supports students in kindergarten straight through grade five. We also have the privilege and honor to partner with the New England Center for Children. This program helps us provide services for children with autism spectrum disorders. Specifically, we work on meeting the educational and social needs of children with autism. We have a partner classroom and two cooperative models which utilize the instructional curriculum, training, and supervision systems that have been developed at the New England Center. So, Collicott by the numbers. This year, again, we house kindergarten through grade five. We have students of all abilities totaling 661 children in 30 classes. It is my pleasure to report on accountability. You have heard this before, so we don't need to spend a whole lot of time on it, but it is very exciting to share that we have 93% meeting targets. That means progress towards the targets set for us by the state and our accountability percentile is 91. That is very high and something we don't take for granted. We strive every day to keep that. Specifically, when we break down and look at our data, we use this data to help us improve our school. So, the data that I'm going to share with you tonight is going to lead into the three goals that we have set with you. Here in English Language Arts, you can see that we have exceeded targets, all targets that have been set for us. What you can see from this table is that we are very good at multiple choice and short answers. We still have yet to improve on our open responses in, across all subjects, to be honest with you. There's been a commitment through our Reach for Reading Program for reading and writing and more writing across all curriculum. So, although this looks very impressive, we know behind that data where we need to also improve. So, we have exceeded all targets in English Language Arts. In math, we've also met most or exceeded some, but we, in the high needs area, have only improved, but we were slightly below target. This means students who are, students who could potentially be described as high needs did not make as much progress as we would like. So, you'll see in our school improvement plan that we have specific goals to support this area. We also put a lot in place to support children who could be described as high needs in math. Again, we saw great progress with multiple choice and short answer, but again, lost some points with the open responses. As far as science, we've exceeded the target set for us as well. I think our Elementary Science Coordinator can also echo my thoughts in that we, again, have done very well with multiple choice and short answer and we need to develop our open response writing. So, that data, although brief, can give you a big picture of what led us to this point. And now, I'd like to have Mrs. Hamada, formerly Madame Hamada, we now call her Mrs. Hamada, talk a little bit about our three goals.
So, as we looked at the ELA accountability data and we know where we need a little bit of work and as Holly said, we need writing across curriculum. So, those are the school improvement goals for Collicott, increasing achievement in science and math, increasing writing opportunities to support achievement in all content areas, and strengthening the homeschool connection. So, for our school improvement plan, our first goal is increasing achievement in science and math. So, Collicott staff will work to increase proficiency in science and math for all students by implementing new science curriculum units, which Ellen is going to be talking about, and supporting math in small group instruction. And we do that because now teachers know the standards that need to be developed and the skills that need to be developed especially for our high needs students and they work in centers and they also are able to work on with technology. For example, with Study Island, they can modify what they present to students. They can change questions, change numbers of answers that they can pick from. So, everything can be modified for those students to help them be successful. So, the result will be percentage of students who score proficient and advanced on grade five, science and technology engineering, MCAS, will increase by 20% by May 2021 and the proficiency gap for students in the high needs subgroup in math will decrease.
So, to achieve the goals that Xena just referenced, we've put several strategies in place. The number one strategy, Strategy 1-1, is we are going to provide additional opportunities for small group instruction in math, especially for students in the high needs subgroup. We are lucky in the district to have the support of district math coaches and because with their guidance and the work of the teachers who have gone to the Desi Math Rigger Conference, many of the teachers are bringing back strategies of using a guided math model which uses a lot more small group instruction in math, which will support all students, but specifically those students in the high needs subgroups. Another strategy that we will work on is we are going to create a district curriculum crosswalk between the FOS lessons that support the STEM standards. Out of the eight units per year in the Reach for Reading curriculum, four of them will have a nonfiction topic of science. So, our goal as curriculum coordinators and teachers is to really highlight those lessons so that the instruction for science is happening during the ELA block and those meaningful interdisciplinary connections are being made and emphasized to all students. Strategy 1-3 is we will identify and highlight connections in math that support the STEM standards as well. This year, with the new MCAS, we are seeing an increasing number of questions on the science MCAS that require students to draw conclusions from looking at data, graphs, different charts. So, we are going to partner to find those connections. We will also increase opportunities for school-wide STEM collaboration. This year, we had the first ever Massachusetts STEM Day, which was celebrated across the state and in all of our elementary schools. And this was a time for both programs, the English Innovation Pathway as well as the French Immersion Pathway, to come together and celebrate STEM and take part in different STEM challenges. And we are looking to recognize more opportunities for such collaboration throughout the year. And finally, we are looking to increase opportunities for consistent coding lessons across all grade levels. This has been something that's been talked about a lot in the news of the opportunities of new jobs that will be available for our students in the future with access to computer science knowledge. And right now, we are doing a great deal of coding using programs such as ITCH, the Dash and Dot Robots, and these are being happening in our classrooms with teachers during STEM time as well as with the instructional technology teachers. We also have offerings during our CAS classes for coding as well. And this slide just really brings a smile to my face because it's showing all of the different science and math snapshots throughout the district. If we're starting at the top, we can see some students in fourth grade who are working with a fan and that is actually a visit from the EcoTarium and it was an engineering design lesson that was brought to us. The students were using those fans to model wind turbines and they had to use real constraints such as cost and materials and time to create the most efficient wind turbine and they worked in teams. So, it's just a true 21st century learning activity. Next, we can see our kindergartners in the next two pictures, actually. And this is their first year using the FOS, the Full Option Science Curriculum, and those are both units that utilize live materials. So, in the second picture, you can see worms, so the kindergartners are excited. The next step was they created habitats for those worms to live in and then ultimately, they're brought into the garden. So, they're even learning about composting as early as kindergarten. Then, we see students in the next picture are looking at goldfish. That's part of a unit called Animals Two by Two, where students look at two different animals that are similar and they find the, they compare and contrast the different animals and their structures. So, the next step in that lesson is that they would then go ahead and look at guppies and talk about what makes goldfish and guppies similar and different. And the kindergarten teachers are really doing a great job to connect writing to that and they are doing writing activities in science notebooks as early as kindergarten. The next photo, we can see that's a visit about magnets from the Museum of Science. And the one right in the center on the second row is always a highlight for our fifth grade students. That is our frog dissection and that has been a tradition in the district for about five years. This year, we brought in an organization called Seed Education to lead the frog dissection with our fifth grade teachers across the district. And we can see two kids who were really excited to use real dissection tools and right there, they're looking at the intestines. So, it was a very exciting day. We had to open up all the windows after, but it was a great day. And then, finally, the last thing you can see is actually what's one of the really strong components of the FOS curriculum is that topics that are introduced in kindergarten, they continue to go up into fifth grade. So, this time, up in fifth grade, they're also looking at worms, but at a much more rigorous level and they're learning about their role as decomposers in our ecosystem. So, they're actually bringing their worms into the outdoor garden.
Next, we're going to talk about our Student Improvement Plan, second goal, the increase in writing opportunities to support achievement in all content areas. So, our goal is to provide appropriate targeted intervention and instructional practices early and often to increase reading and writing proficiency in all grades and in all content areas. I just want to say, before we go into the strategies, that we worked with Reach for Reading under the guidance of our Assistant Superintendent Janet Cheon. We worked on an assessment plan with Reach for Reading with a literacy team, leadership team. And Reach for Reading has given us the opportunity to really have the material to develop writing and across content areas. So, in addition to the scaffolded instruction that helps students become accomplished writers, Reach for Reading does provide power writing. Also, it gives a lot of stamina to students while they are writing and it really is, gives the opportunity for students to have a conversation and then write. And also, we found our teachers collaborating. Like, in fourth grade, they were working on a poem in Flanders Field in English and in French and it's about a soldier on a battlefield and they asked the art teacher also to create a project related to that poem. So, they did the daffodils and then they were able to write about it. It's really impressive how teachers are working together when it comes to writing projects, which teachers also have rubrics for and they always choose a trait to focus on to develop student writing. We saw huge, huge difference in writing and the use of technology like Boomwriter as well. So, the result will be 20% of students will demonstrate improvement in open response questions by 2021 with strategies like using Reach for Reading in the English Innovation Pathway, but also GAFI and zigzag topics to support writing in center-based work, homework and classwork. And this strategy will also be used in all content areas, as I said. I mean, in art, it's amazing how they bring the art to the classroom and then they start writing about it. The second strategy, classrooms will incorporate a variety of technology-based platforms to increase writing opportunities such as Boomwriter and then we have the Boomwriter B as well as Study Island. Strategy 2.3 is develop student writing portfolios. Every student has, have their writing in portfolios online and they differentiate instruction to meet the needs of all learners in small groups for remediation and enrichment. And I'm going to let someone talk about enrichment opportunities, Justine.
Sure. At school, we organize enrichment groups. Right now, it's focused on the third and the fourth grade.
All right. So, here are a few snapshots about our students working on their writing. I mean, you see some teachers in the pictures, but they were all working on Reach for Reading material. They were, they all knew what they were doing. The motivation was amazing. I came in, did not announce that I was in, in all these pictures and that took, and in every single picture, they were all focused. It was really amazing.
I also want to point out that if you had a chance to walk the halls today, the level of rigor in our writing is much different than it has been in the past, especially if you look at what our first and second graders are doing right now. It's extremely promising and so we are already seeing the fruits of our labor, I believe. Finally, I'm going to turn it over for our third goal, not finally, but our third goal, right down the end, to our community rep and our parent volunteers. So, Margot, if you want to start?
Hi. The third goal is to strengthen the homeschool connection. Collicott staff will work to provide instruction, intervention, and extended programming to support academic and social and emotional growth for all students. And boy, do they do that. They're fabulous. This staff is amazing. The result, the Collicott will be a more inclusive school. Strategy 3-1, to provide families opportunities to come to school early and often. I know Holly has opened up early in the school year, having new parents come in and meet and come together. It's been wonderful.
I can speak as a kindergarten parent. I feel like, I feel as if there've been many opportunities to get involved and to see where my child's learning. And for our incoming families, we would see-
See you hopefully at our Ice Cream Social in June. More information to come.
Strategy 3-2 is to develop a welcoming team for families new to Collicott. And you just felt it was great coming in as a new parent and-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
And for that, and for 3-2, I think that we are hoping to focus that welcoming team on the families that are, will be entering even after kindergarten because there are, there will be some new families joining us and we want them to feel just as welcome even if they won't be joining us from the, from the start.
Strategy 3-3 is to increase student and family involvement in all aspects of Collicott activities. And just the number of activities that you have, that you involve the families. They love to come up, they love to be involved. One being a huge opportunity for the school and the families is Junior Achievement, which was last week and it is so successful. I don't know if you had the opportunity to be here, but everyone was so excited and happy and the children learned so many new things and the parents and family members and relatives and neighbors or whoever we're helping were so excited to be part of the school. Other programs are the Math League, the International Day, Veterans Day Celebration, One Book One School, the Lunar New Year, Flag Day, and Coffee with the Principal. Do you have anything else to add there? Strategy 3.4 is to provide consistent communication regarding curriculum, events, and opportunities throughout the school community. The communication between the home and the school is just superb. They just do such a great job with all that.
If I could give one plug for something that we focused on this year and it's our website. So, there is, there are so many emails coming at parents these days and we're usually not ready for the information until we need the information, five minutes on the way to the event that we're going to. So, noticing a pattern that parents were often emailing to follow up to find out exact answers, including dates and times, has really driven us to strengthen our website. So, we are training parents, when they ask questions, to say, "Oh, it's on our website. It's on our website, it's on our website." And we are not trying to be difficult at all, but we're just trying to get people more connected to our website and see the value that it is. Every, most answers to the questions that are asked are on the website and if they're not, we put them on after we answer them for the first time. Being a fifth grade parent is very challenging at this time of year because you're tying up all of the events of a pretty amazing elementary school, but you also have to maybe register for the bus for the first time or order supplies from Pierce at a pricely cost if you do it. Or maybe you need to register for middle school camp. So, there's so much coming at families that we try to email as little as possible, but make all of our information available when people need it. So, there are weekly emails from the PTO, there are monthly communications from the principal, there's weekly communication from the teachers, but most answers can be found on our website. So, that's our goal. We're still working on it. So, I just wanted to take that opportunity to tell all the Collicott parents that you should be looking at our website.
So, our next slide has some photographs that illustrate homeschool connection. So, we'll go top, left to right. And the top is one of our younger grades, that's Junior Achievement. So, there is a parent up at the SMARTboard who is working with the whole class. It looks like it's in the younger grades. Like Margot said, that happened last week and it's a really popular event. Not only did the students love it, but I was at a cookout with one of the volunteers and he said he just loves to do it every single year. And that's his thing to volunteer in his son's classroom.
And so, Justine, I'm sorry, I just have to chime in again and say, I don't know many schools who can recruit 85 volunteers. And we did that on Friday and I owe a lot of that success to previous experiences provided by the welcoming teaching staff and also a PTO who is exceptional at organizing events like this. So, those 85 volunteers, yes, they were fathers and mothers and grandmothers and grandfathers and aunts and uncles. There were retired teachers. We really had a rock star here. We had Bill Griffin, who was a former principal here. It was intimidating to me, I told him that myself. It was wonderful, him and his wife divided into two different classrooms for their grandchildren. The level of expertise in the children's room was so exciting and I had the chance to participate as a principal, but also as a parent and it was very special.
The second picture is the top middle and that illustrates a parent who was actually coming in to explain the science fair process. This volunteer has come in year after year. In part, our volunteers for the science fair partner with Ellen Lohan. So, we have a strong volunteer participation at our science fairs and the students at the kindergarten level up to the fifth grade level love participating in that night. And our last photograph up the top, top right, is a picture of students as they are entering the building on one of our Walk to School Days. The students are encouraged to walk to school. If you are too far away from the school, the parents might stop the car a little bit earlier and then walk the rest of the distance into the building. And I think it's a true testament to see all the parents and the students are getting involved, but not only the teachers who sometimes are lining up at Brueker's Bagels at 7:30 in the morning to make sure that the students see, are being helped across the street over on the other side of the square. So, it's a true testament to the community that Holly's built with her staff.
All right. And I was just going to talk about some of the pictures. Sorry. I was going to talk about some of the pictures on the bottom row. So, if you see the first two pictures in the left corner, those are pictures of fifth graders volunteering in our kindergarten classrooms and that's part of our fifth grade jobs program. So, these fifth graders are pretty amazing and they actually volunteer to take one of their recesses each week to do a job around the school. So, it might be volunteering in a classroom. It could be emptying the recycle bins. It could be organizing books in the library. But I have to say, I had fifth grade volunteers in my classroom two days a week and they were fantastic. They helped me with reading groups, they helped me during centers, they helped me, then they even just helped me with little tasks like same thing, like organizing book bags. They were, they were great and they were really enthusiastic. It was wonderful. And then, the picture on the bottom right is a picture of students that received the Collicott Cardinal of their, the week certificates. So, as part of our PBIS initiative, the teachers, every classroom teacher, actually could be any teacher or adult in the building, give children Collicott Cardinal compliment tickets when they see children using positive behaviors. It could be, it could be just listening attentively. It could be maybe they helped another student with something. Really, any type of positive behavior you could give a child a ticket for. Really, any type of positive behavior you could give a child a ticket for. And the children are so excited when they get these tickets and they bring them up to the office and they put it in their grade level envelope. And at the end of each week, Mrs. Concanon or Mrs. Hamada picks one ticket out of each grade level's envelope and picks out a name. And then they announce the name over the intercom and the child can come up and receive their certificate. And it's just a really, really great positive reinforcer. They just, it makes them really want to keep doing those great behaviors. And actually, the classroom that's received the most Collicott Cardinal tickets that week is the classroom of the week. And so then, when you're the classroom of the week, you have to come up and get your picture taken and you actually get to put a little sign on your door that says you earned it that week. So that we, I know when we won that award, my class was really, really excited. They were really proud of themselves. Yeah, so it's a great program. I feel like it's working really well.
Before we get to, so we're just going to talk to you a little bit about beyond the data. How did we get where we are and what we hope to continue to have continued success? I want to recognize a few people that make the school work the way it does. One of our most amazing programs that is new in the past few years is our Collicott Cast Program, which is an opportunity for children to stay after school, not a whole after-school program, but for an hour after school. This year, we've had opportunities in the garden for kickball, soccer. We've had clay and art. We've had sit-back and draw. We've had car racing, Pokemon, comic books. We've had more classes than we've ever had. And this program runs because of the principal of the Cast Program, who is Joanne Barker. She's our administrative assistant, but she also coordinates this amazing program. And it's been a great way for children to stay after school and get some type of enrichment. I also need to recognize, we have the best custodial team in the world. Our head custodian, John Muir, is not working tonight, but wanted to come and make sure our school committee was comfortable and the building was ready. But he leads a great team. Thank you, John. He leads an amazing team. It's, there is a lot happening in these, both of these buildings. And we can always count on John to facilitate everything that we need. Bill Ritchie and Bob Mayhew have also been exceptional in supporting the grounds. If you've had a chance to take a ride around, you'll see improvements on our back hill. Thank you to Bill and Bob for coordinating an effort last summer to improve drainage. The grass is back. The trees are beautiful. And we no longer have floods in the back. And they're currently working on a solution to an issue that we're having in the front, but it's something that we think about and talk about all the time and couldn't be fixed without their help. So I just wanted to make sure to recognize those people who often go unnamed.
So many of us are going to speak to the, to the highlights here at Collicott Elementary School. One of the biggest highlights would be the progress that was made because of the implementation of the school improvement plan. Everyone has been very committed to it, all staff, all teachers. And so there's been a lot of progress that, you know, has been previously spoken about, about that.
So one, a new program that we started this year was the Scripps National Spelling Bee. And we implemented that in grades three, four, and five. So every classroom teach, every student in grades three, four, and five got a packet of words to study. And then each classroom had a spelling bee. And the top two, top two students from each class got to join the spelling bee club after school to prepare for a school-wide spelling bee. And it was serious business. Like they, the kids loved it. There was real studying happening. They worked real hard. They took it seriously. And, and the kids who didn't make it to the school-wide bee were so encouraging of their classmates who did make it. And just as the classroom teacher going to watch it, it was, it was really nice. And they worked really hard and they tried their best and they spelled words that I could not even begin to spell. Elvita Zane was one of the words. They, they got correct.
It lasted three hours. We didn't expect that.
Yes. And it was, it was a very exciting day here and, you know, every kid should have been so incredibly proud of themselves for their hard work for that. So that was a great initiative and I hope we continue that in the coming years. We also continued with our Boom Writer International Bee, and that's for grades four and five, where they, I'm not sure the authors named this year the book they did, but they, they start with a chapter and then they, the kids type in their own chapter and they vote on what chapter in the book should come next. And it gives kids a great opportunity to increase their stamina for writing, to develop character, to develop a plot that is not going to just end at the next chapter. That will continue. So that was very successful. And we had a lot of students who-
We have many finalists.
Yes.
So they're finalists from every elementary school now. And so based on the number of votes the student authors received, we have many invitations out to children in all four elementary schools to participate in the International Bee, where they will get to continue to write the final chapters. We were lucky enough last year to have a student actually win one thousand dollars. We had no idea that was coming, but it was one thousand dollars towards, I believe, anything the student wanted, based on the work that she did for writing. So that definitely was motivating to children, but more than that, they were motivated that other children were reading their writing and voting for them. So it's definitely motivated children to keep writing.
I just want to add about Boom Writer that it is the technology tool that is used in third, fourth, and fifth for Reach for Reading Writing Projects. We had a big professional development at the beginning of the year when the Boom Writer, they came to our school and we had all teachers attend that professional development. So teachers are really well-versed in using Boom Writer and now are using it like easily in every classroom.
I know Holly touched a little bit about Cast. For families who are watching at home, I can just highlight the program. We usually run Cast. One session is about six weeks long. And our teachers here at the Collicott School offer up their time, not only after school, but also before school, so that we can be inclusive of all families and their schedule. Some classes that we have this session, but not limited to, we have coding, we have nail club, we have walking club. There is a group on Friday morning that plays basketball. And I know that it is very popular, so there is a waiting list. So if any families are interested in Cast, next year, you have to get your forms in right away.
And so we have two successful science fair. And as we kind of highlighted in our homeschool connection, we have a parent who will come in and does a demo lesson of what a successful science fair project looks like, which kind of kicks off the whole season, which is very exciting. We have a K-one and two science fair and a grades three through five science fair. And something new that we did this year was we actually recruited Collicott alumni to come back and serve as judges. And so each student got some personalized feedback and one-on-one attention on their project, which was something that was new and different and we hope to continue in the future.
Could I ask Amanda to just share a little bit as a parent? I know we changed it this year and you shared that you liked the format. So do you want to?
Yeah, the prizes that were given to the students were just very encouraging. You could walk around and see the middle schoolers and, you know, engage with the students. And it just was a very positive experience because the different, I don't remember the characteristics that were awarded to each, but there really was not a winning-losing atmosphere. There was an atmosphere that they were acknowledged and recognized for the hard work that was put into their projects. So it was great for, you know, the young scientists.
And I think a brilliant move, and I just want to share this because it may help other science fairs, is that the PTO ordered sticky notes with a template on it. So the middle school and high school volunteers who came to judge had sticky notes and they could award great data, great collection, great graphs. So it was pre-printed for them and it was, it just really expedited all children feeling like scientists. So I really appreciate the work that went into planning. We very much depend on families to help with that night, and I thought it was a very successful year.
And I think with the transition away from formal prizes to getting that in-the-moment feedback from students is we saw that the work was really student-driven. So we could tell that each child truly worked on that project themselves. It lifted some of the pressure and students were able to have great conversations about their projects with them. So it was a really powerful night.
Here at the Collicott School, we have parents who are very engaged in what's happening inside the classroom. And I think sometimes they might not maybe know what the acronym REACH is or they don't exactly know what the curriculum is. So the PTO sponsored some family resource nights and they set up some centers. So the parents could come in to understand what we use for technology in the subjects. In language arts, math, and technology. And I think that was really successful for parents to kind of close the gap on what they didn't know and what their student, what their child was doing inside the classroom.
Can I just add to that, that this, these nights, these family resource nights, teachers do come to that and they run the centers. So we ran an NG Connect for Reach for Reading. And I was there, Amy Gill was there, Holly was there, Sarah was there, and the teachers ran those centers at night.
And as I mentioned, we do have parents who are very active in our school. And so one thing that was rolled out was principal coffees. And what that was, it gave parents an opportunity to come during the day to have a casual conversation over coffee with our principal, Mrs. Concanon and Mrs. Hamada. And we noticed that the attendance was very high for those events. Sometimes it's really hard at night when you have obligations for yourself, for your family, or your children. So during the day, it was a more casual opportunity. And we saw attendance spike. Our most attended event was that around MCAS, where parents were coming in. They wanted to know what the layout was, what was going to be the content, and just, just any questions or anxieties that they might have and kind of work through those.
So that was my most favorite principal coffee, and I think it's because of the attendance. We saw people that we haven't seen at night events. We saw a lot of second and third grade mothers and fathers who really wanted to know more about state testing, what that looks like, and how they could prepare. So I think it eased a lot of anxiety for people. And we also taught families how to look at data once they get the reports and what questions to ask to help their children move forward.
Another event we had this year was the Lunar Celebration, where for the Lunar New Year, the school came together and had different centers, parent, this was PTO-run. And they had, they read a story and then they did different yoga poses. Yoga poses that went along with the Lunar New Year. And classrooms, each grade had projects to work on within the classroom, too, art craft projects.
This year is actually the tenth year that the Collicott has taken part in the One Book One School Jennifer Kelly Project. And through this project, basically every year, I'm sure you guys have heard about this in the past, but every year, a committee at Collicott comes together to choose a book that the entire school will read. Every child in the school will receive one of these books. And it's usually around some type of theme that the committee thinks is important for the school to learn about or to talk about. So this year, they actually, I, who, who wrote, someone wrote the book involved in Collicott, but it was called The Allergy Avengers. And it actually, it taught children all about, just made them more aware of food allergies. And it also just taught them a little bit about like safety and best practices around food allergies. And so every child received this book and all the classrooms, all the classroom teachers read the story to their students and talked to them about it. And we also have our adventure night every year, where the children have the opportunity to come to the school at night and participate in activities surrounding this book and to learn more about the, the theme of the book. In addition to that, we also had an assembly with a person who was, he was very, very entertaining, but he had a, yeah, he had food allergies of his own. And he talked to the students about his own experiences and also talked to them more about just being safe and around best practices with food allergies. So this is, it's really, really great that we get to do this and really choose a theme for the year and teach the students about it in many different ways.
Yeah. And finally wrapping up some of the highlights is the PTO-sponsored Culturels, which include visitations from many programs. Culture Zoo comes in, the Museum of Science, our visitors, author visit. There are many visitors throughout the year that they, that they, that they schedule with, in communication with Holly and the rest of the teachers as to what their interests and needs are. The field trips and field days are current, you know, lots of field trips are going on right now and the PTO sponsors the transportation for those. And also organizes the parent volunteers for the field days that are coming up at the different grade levels. And I don't know if there's anything else to speak to about.
So we, we have so much more to share with you, but I feel like we could potentially be here for a long time. So if it's okay, I will efficiently summarize some of the other things that we're really proud of. You met our grade five leadership team today. They gave you tours of our buildings. In addition to doing things like that, they're responsible for meeting every now and again to help me make big decisions around what to do with fifth grade students. We also have identified several needs around the building for fifth graders to, to solve problems or support teachers or our custodial staff. So that's been amazing. We've had great success with our future problem solving. We have one individual student, Victoria Kirkham. Congratulations, Victoria, going to the International Bowl. The International Bowl is somewhere different every year. This year, she is lucky enough to travel to Amherst, Massachusetts. In the past, it's been much farther away, but she'll be doing that. We have an amazing group of volunteers who support our Math League. We have Math League in grades two, three, four, and five. Again, we had eighty-five volunteers here for Junior Achievement. We have gardening lessons that are put together by an amazing gardening team. And I encourage you to swing by the garden on the way out. You might take something home. We have a staff that participates in professional development in many different areas. Our most powerful one was with our math coaches this year at the Department of Education, where they worked on Rigger. And again, the participation to really fully adopt the FOS curriculum has been exciting to watch. We've had an amazing First Annual Mass, Massachusetts STEM Day. We'll continue to do that. And we really need to recognize the PTO leadership team at Collicott. They are some of the most efficient and effective people I've ever met. They are efficient and effective at collaborating, recruiting volunteers, and fundraising. And they are very thoughtful about where the money of the parents goes. This year, they have funded so many wonderful enrichment programs, but also funded many PTO mini-grants for each grade level, for really nice-to-have things, things that maybe we can't afford from a typical budget. But we've been very fortunate to receive some very special grants for them. So I wanted to recognize them. I also want to say I thank Sam for mentioning The Allergy Avengers, which was a book written for Collicott. We commissioned an author and an illustrator, illustrator to come get to know the school and get to know the staff. And the book was written for us. The characters are Collicott students. The main character is Ava Kelly, who is now a senior in high school. This is a book, we all know the Kellys. Eric Kelly is no longer a Collicott parent, but he still runs our box program. And he is very much the life of and spirit of Collicott. We hope he continues to come back. But I wanted to take time to recognize the One Book One School Committee, especially this year, Carrie Kelly and Michelle Kennedy. This is a definite project of love that is near and dear to their heart, and they really did an amazing job this year. It is our goal, by the end of the year, to do a book drive collection, where we will collect those books and then share them with another school so they can do just what we did with an adventure night and really make people very aware of allergies. That was very near and dear to Jennifer Kelly. Um, and it's very near and dear to many of our populations. So, we do look forward to doing a drive to collect those books and then share with the community. They're in every school library and at the Milton Public Library now. And um, our goal is again to spread awareness in the name of Jennifer Kelly. So, that is it for us for tonight. Uh, we appreciate your patience. I, I think maybe we are excited about sharing things and could continue, but um, with respect for your time, uh, thank you.
Um, would anyone like to speak to the site or make comments or anything before we move on?
Yes.
So, first of all, thank you for a very thorough um, presentation. Um, I just want to thank you all for putting in the time uh, and the effort uh, to be here tonight and to inform us um, so well about everything that's happening here. It's evident um, just from the leadership team and the um, the tour that they gave us of the school. Uh, I, as I have done every single time with my tour guides at every school, um, I'm going to give a shout out to Macy and Sophie. Who just could not contain their excitement um, about the school and everything that you offer here and everything that they are involved in. And that, uh, that energy is absolutely contagious. So, thank you very much um, for that. Um, and Holly, uh, I just want to thank you um, for all of the work that you've done. You are a true uh, asset to Milton Public Schools. Um, and we're, we're very, very lucky to have you here. So, thank you for that. Um, I, I do want to clarify that the, the CAS uh, class on car racing is not an offshoot of NASCAR. That it's uh, model car racing, is that, is that correct? Okay, all right, great, I just want to clarify that fact. Anyway, thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone? Uh, Dr. Donahue?
Uh, so again, thank you very much and I will um, acknowledge Kelly and Veronica, who are excellent tour guides. Uh, their, their excitement was contagious. Uh, it's, it's wonderful to, I don't, I lost track of the number of times that I heard Reach for Reading uh, in the presentation tonight. So, it's wonderful to see that it's being incorporated so thoroughly by, and I think it's only its second year um, in the district. So, uh, thank you very much and thank you to all of you for the time and everything that you put in uh, for the leadership roles here at, at Collicott.
Um, all right, so finally, um, this is our last, this is, was our last uh, site visit of the year. And uh, member, um, member White had mentioned when we have our summer retreat about what would, what a good idea would be. And, and she was the one who recommended that we uh, maybe, you know, visit each school for at least one school committee meeting. And we really want to give a shout out to Milton Access Cable.
Right, thank you.
Because they made it happen to uh, to come up and set up at each school. It's a lot of work and um, but it has been um, it's been a great joy. Um, as my committee members um, have stated, to really, you know, no disrespect to you guys, it's great, but to see the kids' pride in their school really is the best part of the night. It's, it kind of exemplifies everything you guys have been talking about, all of your hard work to see these children s- take the tour, take the classrooms, take that agenda extremely seriously. They were on point about everything they needed to relay as far as information and just very, very impressive. So, I often feel that, you know, the children are your, you know, your greatest sort of example of your success and uh, and they were really, really impressive. Um, on a personal note, I am a Collicott mom. So, every time I come back to the Collicott School, um, it, it's very near and dear to my heart. We started, um, my daughter, who's just finished her freshman year in college, she was uh, opened the school in first grade when it opened, uh, when we came here. And uh, we had Mr. Schultz and we had Principal Sheehan uh, before we left. And it was just a really, the, all, all four elementary schools are special. But of course, I just have so many great memories here. Um, my son who had Mrs. Hamada, second grade, um, uh, is a sophomore and just their, their days, they love all the schools, but their days at Collicott are truly, you know, near and dear to their heart. And when I look at all of the activities, I thought we had a lot back in the day, but you guys have just upped that beyond belief. So, it's a really active and powerful school and uh, I want to thank you. You know, Holly, I sit, I've sat on health and wellness with you for the past couple of years and get to hear a lot what's going on. But again, you and your team are um, superstars and you're a credit to the success of this school. And we're, to echo um, my committee members, we're really, really lucky to have you as a leader here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, oh yeah, number White.
I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight and I got to get a talk with Patrick, who reminded me of my son who's a redhead. So, we had a nice talk and he's very confident and he was very proud of the school. But I also want to comment, the building looks terrific. I mean, the classrooms are so inviting. I just kept getting drawn into everything that was on the bulletin boards and the learning the kids are doing. So, it's just really a wonderful environment, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, just in closing, on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, you epitomize what a site council is. You didn't give yourself credit with the budget work that you send forward. So, uh, thank you for the hours, the months, the years um, that each of you uh, give to the Collicott and the Milton Public Schools. A plus.
Thank you very much.
In the spirit of time, I'm going to put out a blast tomorrow and um, I'll hold until the next meeting.
For happenings, okay, great. Okay, uh, next is Chair's report. So, we're going to move back to um, the school choice vote. Um, I'm going to um, ask that the superintendent just give um, a recommendation on school choice before we move forward.
I would recommend, again, if you've watched these meetings or one meeting, you understand our enrollment and our space issues. So, I would recommend that the Milton Public Schools not participate in school choice, the school choice program.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion uh, for the school choice vote. So, a motion is made that the Milton Public Schools will not be school choice district for the FY twenty school year.
Second.
Any discussion from anyone? Okay, all those in favor of that? Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Uh, next, in the packet is uh, the assigned uh, subcommittees. I just threw his mine here now, if I can find it here. The subcommittees and advisory committees for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. So, I've reached out and spoke to most all of you about what you'd want to be and what you were willing to chair. Thank you. Um, so I don't know if you had a chance to look it over and if everybody uh, feels confident. Uh, I know that member, Rosemarin's not here, but I conferred with her that um, uh, the committees that she'd want to be on and the ones that she's willing to chair and she approved those. So, I wanted to make a formal vote on those. I didn't know if anyone had any questions, any discussion, if you want to wait. Um, I, I feel that, I do want to say that, I feel that through the month of May, that the current committee should stay as is and then this can start next month. You can discuss, you know, meeting times and dates and reorg. But I know like for health and wellness, for instance, we have our final meeting, May thirty first um, of this month to kind of finish out the year and that would kind of end it. So, I thought that we could stay as is through the month of May and then start these next month, if that sounds good to everybody. Yeah.
The only issue I have is that next Monday, the presentations scheduled to meet and I'm not going to be able to make, make that meeting.
Okay.
I have another commitment.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you could be available to do that meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Or whether we need to reschedule it.
I already told um, showing that I have a, I'll be at school committee Brooklyn.
Okay, as, as well, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I should be able to head it, so no worries. Yeah, all good. Okay. Um, okay.
Should we vote that?
Yeah, so formally vote. All right, so um, I, I'm going to say a motion is made to approve the Milton School Committee, Subcommittee, Advisory Committees as presented tonight, May fifteenth, um, twenty nineteen for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, super. Okay, uh, town meeting update, uh, all of my colleagues here know, um, town meeting uh, broke a, I guess, a, a record that it was a one night only event for spring town meeting and none of us thought it could happen, but uh, it was. So, the two uh, main issues uh, that we had uh, with regards to the schools uh, for this town meeting was the approval of our budget, which passed. And also uh, the approval of forty thousand dollars to our newly appointed school building committee, um, which is going to be seed money for them to basically start their work um, on our school building project. So, both were successful, all went well. Um, so anyone else, if anything else to, it's pretty simple and easygoing this year, which was great.
Whatever, well, I'm going to talk about one thing in uh, finance, but.
All right, well, we'll, yeah.
We'll do it in finance.
That's what I thought, yeah, yeah, okay. And then um, the next thing I wanted to talk about was retreat dates for the summer, um, which is something I just kind of wanted to throw out uh, now to try to get an idea. I'm just going to open up my calendar. Um, do Pete, would you think just generally that people would like to do it, you know, uh, I always felt that it's good to do it not too late so that we can have it set and then know what our goals were. Um, for the school year, like not to wait till deep into August. But would you, would you think late June, would you think mid, late July? Has anyone been able to think what dates might work for them best? I also think that based on, my initial feeling is because the strategic, um, the district wide strategic plan is so well um, sort of cemented by the, the committee that we can use that as a foundation, that I don't think, I think we really only need maybe one day, a four to eight type thing, we can do a break for dinner. Does that make sense for everybody? Yeah. Um, so I, I, you know, I, you, why don't we even do um, by the end of next week? Dates, do you want to do late June dates and late July dates? Does that make sense to anyone?
Okay. Late July won't work for me.
For you, all right.
It'll be a vacation, but late June works.
Late June, okay. What about um?
How late in June are you thinking?
Yeah, I, I'm actually, I'm away the last week in June that I look at it. I mean, we get out, I, I mean, we either could, we either, we either could do it right when school ends, that week of the seventeenth, or we can bump it up to uh, maybe the, the week of July eighth. Does that make sense to anybody? July eighth, good.
Is everybody going to be around that week?
I don't know if I'm around that week.
Okay.
Let me, I'll, I'll, I'll know with.
All right. Do you think, would you rather, would you want to do like um, a Thursday or a Friday later in the week? Like a four to eight, like maybe a Thursday night, does that make sense? Or is it beginning of the week better? I know the, because the first week is fourth of July. So, so Dr. Donahue, why don't you look at your schedule and let us know what days? Um, I'm pretty open that week of July eighth. And why doesn't everyone that week from four to eight, let, let me know which date works best for them and then I can tally them up and then at the next meeting, we can make, do a more formal vote. Does that make sense for a four to eight time slot that week?
That's fine.
Okay.
Should we also send you weeks when we know we can't be here in case that week doesn't work out for Dr. Donahue?
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds great. I'll send out a reminder too. Um, and then also, um, the, the other thing I would like you to do is, um, and what I wanted to discuss was, um, things that you would like to talk about a- as well at the retreat that you would like covered. You know, I, part of me thinks I know we've had um, Glenn Kuchar come and be a facilitator. I don't, again, because of, because of what we have in order uh, with regards, with regard to the strategic plan, I don't know whether or not we need a facilitator, but I'd like your feedback on that too. If we can just kind of set the agenda and discuss what, what we feel that we'd like to discuss for the year. Even, even things such as, you know, best, our best practices, meetings, setups, things like that. Any, anything you want to discuss in that realm?
Okay. Do you have a sense, Sheila, about meeting over the summer? Do you have a sense of like how often we're going to meet and what week that might be? Because that might be helpful to know now as we're planning.
Yeah, um, we, we don't have, we, they're not set yet Glenn, right? Um, and Mary, we didn't, we haven't done that yet. I mean, I think that we usually, do we usually still meet maybe just once in July and once in August for the most part? Yeah. So, if, um, so, um, Betty, you said you're, you're away the fifteenth?
No, the twenty first.
The twenty, uh, of July?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, why don't we look at maybe either the tenth or the seventeenth? So, those Wednesdays, why don't you do this, the tenth, seventeenth or the thirty first of July and let me, let me know which one works the best? And then um, and then the same thing with August.
So, sorry, I'm interpreting.
Yeah.
But in August, didn't we, don't we always have a meeting that last week? The right before school starts? When is school starting? Twenty eighth?
Um, just a sec. Do we have it the first day of school or is that?
No, but we, last year I remember that.
No, the week before, the week before.
Yeah.
Because I was in California.
So, this is the, these are the days that they come, the twenty sixth, twenty seventh, yes.
We call it was the same.
So, maybe the week of the nineteenth.
The only thing I'm going to echo, um, I'm going to echo, um, it's a very hard, that I, we, I might, I too might be moving kids into college that Wednesday. Unless we, unless we do it.
We can do the next week.
Yeah.
That's the first day of school though.
What's the first day of school, the Wednesday?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
So, could, can we maybe look at maybe that Monday, the twenty sixth? Would you be back then?
I, I'm just, I don't care, you can have a meeting without me, I have what you put there.
That's a difficult day, that's the first day for teachers.
Oh, that's right, okay, okay.
That week we didn't have a meeting, we had, it, that's the problem. It's that week or the, because, and so, other people.
I mean, do we have to, do we have to meet the, right, right before school starts? Could, could we meet the fourteenth? And then we have one on the twenty eighth?
We wouldn't have it on the first day.
We wouldn't.
We wouldn't have it on the first day of school.
Okay.
So.
Then, then why do we usually have to have one like right before school starts?
Just to prepare people for the start of school, like to find people.
Changes. When summer's coming to an unfortunate end.
I guess, I guess, okay.
Bust information and.
Maybe if everybody sends their dates.
Yeah, why don't you send the dates in August and then we'll look and try to find something?
We have to approve vendor warrants and keep the business uh, in place.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but yeah, but I mean, I, but at the same time, if, if two or three of us aren't here that week and then, I don't know, we'll have to figure it out.
If they send their weeks in, then where you and I can.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, sounds good, we'll, we'll, we'll look into it. Okay, thank you. And then, we'll move on to finance then, that ends, Chair.
Great. So, finance met yesterday, um, and we voted um, to recommend that the school committee vote the fiscal year twenty budget um, in an increased amount um, that was approved at town meeting. And that was uh, fifty-five thousand dollars extra um, that we got after all the cuts that we made. So, we got back um, fifty-five thousand dollars um, due to the um, the help and support of Katie Conlin, Melinda Collins, uh, Amy Dexter, Cheryl Togias and a lot of other people um, working on this. So, uh, that was fortunate. And just to shout out, uh, for those who don't know, the library um, also got back enough money uh, to keep, to stay open on Sundays, which is uh, wonderful and will help everybody in town. Um, so, uh, I'm going to make a motion um, that uh, the school committee vote the fiscal year twenty budget in the amount of fifty-one million, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars um, as approved by town meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody want to turn it down? All right, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Um, we also discussed at finance, um, the um, priority list for that um, additional funding that we received. And we did not uh, take a vote. We tabled the discussion to speak to various individuals and we are meeting again uh, at some point next week, not at our regular time, but we'll meet uh, again soon um, and have a recommendation for you uh, to bring to the next school committee meeting.
Great.
Uh, and the last thing that I have to do is to make a motion to approve. And the last thing that I have to do is to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number forty-four dated May ninth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. All in favor? And again, unanimous. Thank you all. That ends my report.
Okay. Next, we go into policy. So, Member Everhart?
Alright, so we have a few policies in the packet and some of new. It's just really a second reading. The first policy you'll see here is policy GDEA, the State Ethics Conflict of Interest Policy. This is just our second reading. I would like some feedback or thoughts that you have about the changes that we suggested making to this policy. I can review for everyone that it would be to delete the section that says to avoid nepotism in the supervision of personnel. The school committee directs that no employee be assigned. No, that's not correct. This part, we are not deleting.
Right. I'm just going to ask about that.
We're just deleting the part, the part on the back of the page. We're not deleting that other part.
Okay.
So, that's incorrect. We are just deleting, we talked about changing the policy so that children, so that young children of people who sit on the school committee could work for Camp Cunningham or Milton-Sommer-Richmond or something like that. That, that was the part that we wanted to change. And we had made this policy back in two thousand and five that said no member of, a school committee member or any one of the immediate family of an administrator of the school district could work for the district. But of course, the second part of that has, there have been people who have been doing that. And there are people, children of people who work in the district, who work for the district. And I feel like that it is an unfair burden for the young people of school committee members to not be able to learn from the programs that we offer such as Camp Cunningham and Milton-Sommer-Richmond and after-school programs and.
So, even a custodial, custodial program where you can clean the bathrooms and the toilets and labor stuff.
Yeah, I mean, this really sprung out of conversations I had with former students who had worked for those programs and then went on to be teachers.
Yeah.
And thought, oh my, we have many members, it won't affect me or two of us on the board. Anyway, so this part we are not deleting. This part would actually have to stay in fact. That you would never work, you would never be supervised by someone you are related to.
Right.
So, that needs to stay in because that's part of the law. So, anyway, we can have a second meeting next time. I don't know what happened to that.
Yeah, I was curious about why we were deleting that.
Like, no, we're not, so.
Yeah.
But what are your thoughts? Any feedback on that?
I, yeah, member.
I think it makes a lot of sense and I think it's overdue. I know of a former school committee member who was concerned that a child of theirs could not apply to work in the Milton Public School system. And so, I, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay. So, we'll just fix that to formally vote?
We'll have further conversations about this next time.
Or do you want to, do you just want it to, do you just want to?
Well, it's just a second reading, so we're not voting on it.
Okay, just a second, okay, I'm sorry.
We have to have.
You're right, you're right.
You do vote on the second.
You wrote the second.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Um, no, I, no, the policy's wrong. I'm not going to vote on it.
Okay, don't, don't, until we figure out what's deleted and so forth.
Yeah, no. This is incorrect. We'll fix it. Of course, that's technology. You know, it happens. Alright, so thank you. Alright, so the second one, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to add my two cents on that, that people, there has been discussion about changing the language that just says minor children.
That's right.
But as you pointed out, you know, it, it affects those who are, you know, would apply and would succeed in getting a position on their merits, who are, you know, young adults as well. So, I.
Alright, so the next policy, if you recall, is Access to Digital Resources, policy IJND. This is again a second reading of this policy. And if you recall, the, so we have two, two copies. One has the red part that we changed and then the one that would be a clean copy that we would vote on. And this just adds information in about the Children's Internet Protection Act and the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act and that we are compliance with those acts.
This is very, very minor, but there is a typo in the red section. So, when it goes into the final version.
Oh, yeah, I see it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right, but, that part?
Yeah, but.
Then if you recall, this will be made available to parents and be part of the things that they are.
Handbook.
Handbook signing off on.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, for the second, if you turn the page over, there's a section on employee use as well.
Yeah.
And the protection of student data and information. So, we, we'll have AJ come back to us again in the fall, late winters, chocolate party, so. Alright, so I can make a motion to approve the changes to policy IJND.
Well, one other comment. Do we want to keep the note at the end of it? The informational note, or do we want to remove that? It was in the policy previously. I don't think.
I don't know. What do you think, what do you think, Dr.?
You mean, Dr. Donahue, the note, the FCC regulations?
Yeah.
To keep it in or to strike it? I'm sorry.
Just to get rid of it if you don't really.
Yeah, do we want to get rid of it? It's, it's interesting and it's pertinent, but I don't, I don't know if it necessarily affects the policy.
Like, it speaks to it in general, like overall?
Yeah, that's true. But I'm sure we'll be editing this again in two years.
Or in two months.
I mean, it might say to parents who, you know, are.
That's a good point.
Are advocating for, you know, changes here that we have to comply with federal law.
That's a good, that's a very good point.
It's been in two thousand and one.
Okay.
So, I'll make the motion to, I guess, I don't know, re-adopt policy IJND with the changes as noted and the spelling correction.
Well, second.
Any more discussion about it? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Alright, unanimous. And then the last policy, which we had discussed previously, was just to re-adopt our philosophy of athletics because we think it is very important to, once again, reaffirm our belief that if you are, no matter who you are as a Milton Public School employee, that you are acting with the best possible way you can with students or athletes. And that, as we say here on the bottom, participation in athletics in the Milton Public Schools is a privilege. It carries with it responsibilities to the team, the sport, the school, and the community. Coaches and student athletes in the Milton Public School athletic programs are expected to accept their individual responsibilities and act accordingly. Student athletes deserve the full support of their parents as they set out to represent their family, their school, and their community. So, I am making a motion to re-approve this policy, policy Philosophy of Athletics. I think it says JJI.
It does.
Yep. Oh, second.
Any further discussion about this philosophy of athletics? All in favor of readoption of this policy? Okay, unanimous.
And if I might?
Yes.
We have our policy book and we go to it often and we appreciate all the editing.
Sorry.
So, we'll make a special note to share this with the coaches and the students and the parents of our student athletes.
Thank you so much. And we'll bring back the, sorry about that. I didn't see that online, so I missed that piece there.
Okay.
We have minutes?
I don't think we have any minutes.
Yeah, we.
No, we don't.
Yeah, it said minutes. I was just making that, but we, we don't have them, so we'll put those on the next agenda. Okay. Um, and then old business, none. Citizen Speak topic response. I do want to, I do want to speak to this from Citizen Speak at our last week's meeting with regards to our French immersion program and policy. So, I just want to state on behalf of the school committee that by Massachusetts law, Milton Public Schools must accommodate all parents who wish their children to be educated in English. Milton Public Schools does offer a French immersion program starting in first grade, which does have a cap based on our overall enrollment of the program. Per our school committee policy, the distribution of French immersion versus our English Innovations Pathway classrooms is determined by parental sign-up for the child. Upon receipt of the, of the first grade form with the parent request for French, the child is put into our lottery based on the number of requests that we receive. So, next year for our, currently, next year for our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, based on our parental sign-up, Colicott and Glover will each have three French, I mean, three English Pathway classrooms and two French classrooms. Tucker will have two English Pathway classrooms and one French. And the Cunningham will have three English pathways and one French. As a result of this, we have more French seats requested for Tucker, Glover, and Cunningham than we have seats available. For the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, we started with thirty students on our district-wide waitlist based on the parent's sign-up. Currently, based on the combination of some parents opting to remain in English instead of going to French, even though they had the option, and families who have decided to move out of the district, we may have some additional seats available in French. So, so far, we have offered seventeen of the thirty initial students on the waiting list a placement in French in the district. We do anticipate moving further down the list as the spring and the summer progresses because families, of course, continue to move out of the district and also just change their mind and opt for the English pathways through this time period. So, that will be ongoing from now until the end of school and really all the way through Labor Day, up through August and Labor Day. Also, to speak to the question of why we don't create a new French immersion classroom for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, based on everything else that's been happening in our district, it's, it's very simple that we don't have the classroom space. Again, we have an enrollment crisis and we don't have the classroom space or the money for the additional teacher that would be needed. Creating eighteen classrooms for first grade when we barely have enough room, I mean, for the first grade when we barely have enough for the seventeen is just not fiscally responsible based on our given circumstances. Reminder that we are, we were built for fourteen strands at each grade level. At that grade level, we're currently running seventeen. And then converting one of the existing English classes to a French, which we know some parents have spoken to, it would force us to move the English students away from their home school, which we also do not deem to be an option again because it's a mandate that all children that choose the English pathway be educated. The French program is a, an option that we have in our district, but it is not, it is not the legal demand. So, parents need to be aware of that. But again, we are constantly in touch with everyone who's on the waitlist. We're constantly in touch with parents who are changing and rearranging. A lot of decisions are made, again, as we said, between now and Labor Day. Okay. So, next meeting, our next official meeting is June fifth, I believe. Is that correct? Let me check the agenda.
Yes.
So, it's Wednesday, June fifth. So, is there any items or anything people would like to have on it? Updates from anything?
Well, that's going to be your retiree event.
Okay, beforehand, okay.
Beforehand. I'm also bringing Dr. Karen Spalding to that meeting for the community to meet her and you to formally appoint her.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
And then there'll be, you'll have some subcommittee requests.
Yeah. Maybe we can do some end of the year stuff. Maybe we'll do one, we'll do transportation, health.
I don't know that we'll have a transportation meeting before then, unless you're going to do it.
And you'll have your summer.
We'll have that, yeah, I'll run that Monday one.
Okay.
Maybe report where we're at.
And you'll have your summer dates firm down.
Yeah, and then we'll also speak about summer dates. Okay. Okay.
We won't have a meeting before graduation.
Oh, that's right. Okay, maybe we'll give a, the Chair will give, I mean, the superintendent will give that.
Absolutely, okay.
Right? Is that right?
We'll have a review of senior week and graduation.
Alright.
Good luck to all the seniors.
Yeah.
Yes, good luck, best wishes, and make smart decisions.
I know. Okay, so then, motion is made to move into executive session.
For the purpose.
For the purpose of, I don't have my exact purpose there. Yeah, for the, oh, for just negotiation strategy for our union and non-union personnel. So, I'll need a formal, second of that?
Second.
Okay, and then individual vote. Dr. Donahue? Member Everhart?
Yep.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Member Verella? Yes. Okay.